Classrooms with our students in automotive technology, so.
Well, thank you for that clarification because when I saw 2023.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was a loaner or.
No, sir, it is, it is ours. It cannot be resold by the school division or anything to that effect. There's a certain process that we have to go through to dispose of it if it does reach end of life, if you will.
Well, certainly share with them the gratitude of the school board.
We will, yes, sir. As a matter of fact, Buddy Davis, their service manager, will be in tomorrow. He will be in our classrooms all day tomorrow working with Mr. Myers, our automotive instructor and students. So again, they, they're a wonderful partner and they're dedicated to working with our kids.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for, thanks for clarifying.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Phillips and a second by Mr. Jones. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of non-resident tuition. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight you have a list of students that applied for out-of-county residents to attend our schools unless you have any questions. I ask that you approve those.
Move for approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Brandt, a second by Dr. Miller. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. McClanahan again, consideration of request for supplemental transfer of appropriations.
Tonight you have a list of appropriations that were posted on board docs unless you have any questions concerning those. I'd ask that you approve them as presented.
So I have a question. A lot of them reference to coming compliance with Omega. Was this basically just some bookkeeping stuff or?
It's true enough, the federal grants, which are on a different cycle than our budget cycle. They're on an 18-month cycle starting October 1st, so when we get those allocations, we true them up to the new funding.
Okay, alright, because you had quite a, quite a laundry list this time. Yeah, alright, that's all I have to know.
Do we have a?
Move to approve.
Okay, we got a motion by Dr. Miller.
Second.
Second by Mr. Philip. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel report. Ms. Huntley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Since last month that I came to present the personnel report, we have had a couple of teacher openings that we have filled, all but two, but we have plans in place for those that we're working on. That's in addition to the positions we started the school year with openings, so right now we have a total of eight positions open that we're working on. Again, hopefully filling some of those second semester, those secondary positions. I also mentioned for the first time last month about our classified openings. We're still sitting right around 10 classified openings or vacancies, which is really good. A couple of those are actually added positions because of our special ed numbers increase. So we've had a special, a couple of special ed aid positions that we're looking for. Dr. Ranella also let me know that he's still on the search. We still, of course, need bus drivers. He has five full-time and four part-time openings that he's looking to fill.
Okay.
So unless you have any other questions I could answer, I'd ask that you approve the personnel report as written.
That's sort of odd to have full-time openings, isn't it?
It's just a shortage. Yes, no, we still had those. Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Alright, thank you.
They are more desirable, but we still have them. Yes.
Any other questions?
A move for approval. Second.
And a motion by Mr. Brandt and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ms. Mahoney.
Can I steal one more minute and just let you know about the professional development day that we had last Monday? That's the second one that we've had this year, and of course, we have a third one planned for January. All of our teachers participated in some type of professional development that day, but they were also given time to work in their classrooms. So we recognize the importance of balancing time to give them good professional development, but then giving them much-needed time in their classrooms. So we planned literacy and math PD. Some of the secondary teachers had content-specific PD. Admin were also trained on this day in looking at and using student data. And then we also had a CPR class that's required for licensure. So we tried to do all that on that day to not encumber their time after school, which we've usually done. Some were virtual sessions to not pull them out of the buildings because travel is sometimes something we have to consider. And then, of course, some were in-person sessions. So we'll bring the calendar to you next month as a draft, but those days, I just wanted to let you know that they have been valuable and appreciated, and they'll be on that draft for next year, too.
Okay.
Questions about that?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, Dr. Stanley, amendment of the operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we normally review and approve our budget in late February. And so between the time we passed our original budget until the General Assembly approved their budget in September, to now, we have taken a look at everything and we've got some amendments to make to make sure that we're going to pay the bills. And so when you look at this, we've got a, you know, the breakdown of the specific changes within the itemized budget, but then we've also got some highlights for you that you can see on the screen here. First of all, in terms of increases from the state, you know that we got an additional 2% with the revised budget, which will be effective on Janu- January the 1st. We also received $3.4 million in all-in-Virginia incentives, which I've commented on briefly. All-in-Virginia incentives, Dr. Hale is going to talk to you about that, but the all-in-Virginia initiative, excuse me, really focuses on high-intensity tutoring. It focuses on implementing the Literacy Act, and it also looks at providing us with some funds to address chronic absenteeism. So again, Dr. Hale is going to talk a little bit about that in just a few minutes. We also have got some additional funds for basic aid, for additional support positions. And then we've also got, as you can see, $44,000 in funds that went into miscellaneous accounts throughout our budget. In terms of decreases, if you remember when we had the Calc tool era, we lost about $1.2 million. So you can see that that money we got in basic aid for the support positions and the Calc tool era pretty much leveled each other off, okay? So that's kind of a wash for us. You can also see that the governor's budget proposed a 1% bonus retention payment, which did not go into the final budget. So you can see where it's decreased in what we've received, and it's also taken out of what we're going to pay out. So really, at the end of the day, how does it affect our spending? Well, the $3.4 million is going to go into that all-in-Virginia plan, and then we're going to give the 2% increase, again, starting in, in January, which for the year will make a 7% pay increase for all employees. So that's, that's great.
Yep.
So if you've got any questions about these changes, we'd be glad to answer them at this point. Otherwise, I would ask that you approve them.
So the county cut us 175?
Well, if you remember, our original ask was 750, and the county gave us 575. So that's from our original budget, that amount had to be deducted.
Gotcha.
So we already had a 5% calculated, but not to start until January?
We've already got the 5%, which was, you know, we, we pretty much assumed we were going to get the 5% because that was in the governor's budget, his initial proposal in both houses. You know, I believe they were proposing a 7%, so it was kind of, we felt safe to go with the 5% to start the school year. And then recently, now we've got an additional 2.
Okay.
Looks good.
So you need a motion to?
Yeah, I need a motion to approve the amended budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended budget. Second.
Got a motion by Dr. Miller and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So we just amended, we approved an amended budget. It's good for three months till we start.
Correct. It's got to slash this again next month.
No, it's only six months. That's right.
Alright, I'll take it.
Okay. Next up, Dr. Hale, all-in-Virginia plan.
I'm Dr. Stanley, Chairman Epperson and members of the board. Want to give you an update on the all-in-Virginia plan. This was announced in September with a friendly due date, though challenged to submit a funding plan by October 16th. And I will say kudos to my staff because we turned it in three days early. And so we were pleased because many divisions did not. And we were pleased to turn that in so that we could get approval and move forward. It was approved and posted to the state website in October the 20th, and now has, we will be receiving those funds this month. So we did want to get this in with a good plan, a thoughtful plan, so we can actually use the money that has been allocated for us. So this covers three years, so it's from 2023 through 2026. Again, it's announced in September, school has started. So then we wanted to see how could we make this manageable and really beneficial for our students and for our teachers and for our schools. So the first part of the plan, 70% of that money is given towards high-intensity tutoring. It is not remediation. This is to accelerate students and help support the gaps that they have that we know are a result of the past few years. And so we have two different plans. The first part focuses with elementary. And we're focusing on really for K through 5, kindergarten through 5th grade, homeroom teachers providing this support for their students through stipends because there is additional math and literacy tutoring that they will be providing for those students. So that's part of the plan. Additionally, this can also be used for other tutoring for grades 3 through 5, for math, for literacy. It's hourly, and this is when we often hire retired teachers to come back to support our students in the building. So elementary has focused on that portion. For secondary, we are targeting grades 6 through 8. The research just showed that middle school is an area of concern as far as how students are achieving. Our high schools are continuing to see good success, but at the same time, we know that middle school needs support. So we're thankful for these funds. They will be providing tutoring after school and during the school day. So this will be provided for the students who aren't able to go to stay after school during the school day and then also during teachers' planning for that. We also will have tutor coordinators to help with this work because it is more, you know, that we are asking, and we want to support our buildings with that need. We have also set aside money for summer school of 2024. So this money will also be used for elementary and middle schoo- middle school summer school to be used. And we are really focusing the most of this money this year. You know, we felt it's important to go ahead and address what students need now. And so we have moved forward with those. We are currently finishing our training this week with some of the two programs. We are using Zern, which is provided by the state for free for math at the secondary level. Then we are continuing to use Lexia for our K through 8, okay? So that will be the next piece, and then training and vetting these programs appropriately so they support our students. So that is what we are moving forward with for the tutoring and the high-intensity tutoring. For the Virginia Literacy Act, we know that we have individuals who will need to get endorsed for the reading specialist degree. So we are providing money to support them for that tuition assistance because it is costly to go back to school. And we want to support them so that we can expand the Virginia Literacy Act through 8th grade, which is the ask and the, the plan moving forward. We are also looking at programs to support comprehension, vocabulary and writing at the elementary level, and then also continuing literacy intervention for grades 6 through 8. So that's the 20% of the Virginia Literacy Act expansion. And then finally is attendance. Attendance is, you hear it all the time of the concern with attendance. We also hear it as we talk to employers, you know, the importance of really instilling the values of good attendance. So we will be giving each school money for attendance incentives for the next three years. Many of them are already doing these things. Now they just have the funds to expand upon them. And then we are going to be hiring a family support specialist. This individual will really focus on not just truancy, you know, students who missed unexcused days, but chronic absenteeism, which is students who miss just a lot of days, and it can accumulate. They will work with schools and also be a liaison with our other agencies. And this position, again, will be funded through 2026. No guarantee after that, but that is the plan for that as of right now. Now welcome any questions.
Can I say too, a couple meetings ago, we talked about a Strongwood Communities grant, which included a truancy position, and we did not get that grant. So we feel like with our all-in-Virginia money, we potentially fill that need here.
They'll be located at Central Office, though, right? That person, that position?
Uh, that's to be seen.
That's to be, yeah, it's polyspace.
Behind Fray.
I got you.
That our truancy coordinator's work from, that person might be there.
Okay.
So we have two truancy employees. We wanted three.
Correct.
But this person's going to have a different role than just a truancy.
Correct.
Because attendance is complicated, and we find that the needs of some of our students requires not just court system, right? It's other agencies that we need to work with and to get them the needed support and connections they need, but also have enough background to be able to support the work of our truancy coordinators as well. So we really see this as a collaborative effort to be able to address that.
So the grand scheme of things, we're still just adding one more person. I didn't want you to think we added one with the other grant.
No, we did not receive that grant.
We're not doing that.
So I just like a little clarity on, um, our, our elementary teachers who already have a full plate are going to get a stipend for somehow augmenting some, who already have this full plate, and I'm just a little curious how, paint a picture for me, how they're going to help Johnny and Suzie.
Yeah, one positive, elementary, they're already doing this work, okay? They are already doing this work in many ways. So they are already doing what we would have asked of them because of the focuses of their curriculum, because of what they're currently doing. And so what we are really providing is we are recognizing the work they are doing. We are not adding more other than ensuring that the principals are making monitoring to ensure that we are moving forward with this work. So it's really to say, thank you, elementary homeroom teachers for doing this work. Let's continue it, and then just make sure that we're, we're meeting the requirements of the tutoring. Secondary has been an addition because we do do remediation at the secondary level. This is not the same thing. So it's taken a little bit more time for us to get started for secondary. We have some schools, one school that started right at the beginning of November. Most schools are going to be doing it more intensive, starting after Thanksgiving break.
Okay.
So not adding to their plate, recognizing that work, and then the principals and the coaches will support them. The literacy coaches, as well as math coaches, support what they are doing. Yes, elementary teachers' plate is full, very full.
So will all the tutoring be done during the day or any after school?
For elementary during the day because transportation, you know, is an issue. But for secondary, there are some pockets where they have had good success with after school, and so they have been able to work that out. But if they're not served after school, then we would serve them during the day. And there are requirements. These are, there are students who aren't either below proficiency. They haven't passed their SOL test, or they barely, they're in a, they're in that kind of just passed enough. You know, we want to make sure we're supporting them.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
And so we already have a summer school budget, and so now we're adding, we have extra money. So is this going to be, right, summer school on steroids or, or, I mean, are these kids going to be required to come if they're not proficient or?
We, we highly encourage our students to come. One thing that will, this will allow us to do is before our CARES funds, as you know, we have been using our CARES funds steadily every year. This will allow us for summer school this year to pay our teachers the same rate as what we did previously, which is a higher rate for summer school as it should be, because they are coming in in the summer and be able to support them. So what it does do is, allow us to do is to have enough staff to be able to truly support their needs and have the hourly rate at least as it was last year.
We're going to lose the CARES fund, right?
It's going away, correct.
Is that after, when does that go, when does it go away?
How much do we have left in CARES? Do you know off the top of your head?
Not exactly. It runs out September of '24.
Okay, yeah.
And we have it planned for the uses between now and then to expend the remainder of it. I think we have less than 5 million left. 3 to 5 million is about what we have to spend this year.
Now, if you don't spend it, do you lose it? Do you lose it?
Yes, but we have, we will spend.
And this, this funding, we do not lose. So if, if we do not spend all that we have allocated for this school year, we will, we will continue, and we will carry it over to the next year. We do need to spend it by 2026.
So two more questions. Do we have an adequate pool of retired teachers to, to achieve what we want to achieve?
We have some that are, that we have, they have, they already come in, they've been working with the principal, and we have a few others. We are always looking for others who might want to do this work and to help support, but a lot of it will still continue to be provided by the classroom teacher. The benefits of that is that they know the student, you know, they know, you know, how to work with the student. At the same time, we are encouraging our principals to be very mindful of how their staff is doing. You know, we, we don't want anyone to be overwhelmed.
Okay. And then how are we going to measure this?
We will financially, you know, these are different line items, so there's that financial piece. Every month, there are requirements that we ask of each school to submit to us to, to monitor progress. We will know also the, hopefully, you know, the goal is that we will see increased student achievement at the end of the school year, especially in those two areas. So that is how we will continue to measure it. Additionally, we have other formative, other assessments we use throughout the year to see. And we also understand that we may have to make adjustments. So if we notice that when we do our next round of MAP data coming in the winter, if we are not seeing, you know, what we need to see, or we still, you know, think there's additional support, then we will adjust this plan and then move accordingly.
So you'll keep us informed?
I will keep you, I, I've, I've spent a lot of time with the spending plan, and we spend a lot of time with our principals and continue to do so to make sure they're supportive, but also to make sure that we are doing the ask of the work.
So are we identifying individual, I mean, the teacher's in the room with all of her, her, his kids. Three or four of them are struggling more than the rest. Are they the ones that are the focus, or is it the focus for the whole classroom?
The focus of the, this, this money is for those students who are considered below proficient or just meeting the mark. What we have found is we have many students that meet both, that do need this. And so by providing a wider net, especially at the elementary level, it will really help everyone. Secondary is more targeted because we have more data, we have more information for them.
Can I just compliment Dr. Hale, her staff and all of our administrators? And we start the school year with a strategic plan in place, and, and this is how we're going to attack the school year and best provide support for all of our students. And then in September, the governor passes this all-in-Virginia plan. So all of a sudden, you're, you're thinking, okay, we've got our schedule set, we've got our plans in place. How are we going to maximize this money while the school year is already started? You know, we want to provide additional opportunities for our kids. At the same time, we don't want to just continue to put all on our teachers and ask them to do more and more and more and more because, you know, core instruction is the most important part. If we get this right the first time, hopefully that reduces the need for remediation and additional tutoring. So I think they found a good balance. And it may not look exactly the same in every building. You know, some schools may have more in terms of resources with retired teachers coming in, but it, it's a plan that I think can be effective and, again, make wise use of the funds that's being provided by the state.
And Ms. Walsh and I will continue to monitor it, you know, we will do that.
Dr. Hale, so where are you fitting this in again? Is it in the homeroom session? I mean, you already got a full day. Is it during the planning, planning period?
Elementary is focused on homeroom and within the school day of when they're working with students in their groupings. Secondary is focused on when a teacher has planning and is able to work with students. But also, some schools are looking at providing additional support for those students who need the most support within that time block. And then secondary is some after school.
And you can't require it, it's just recommended?
After school, you can't. You encourage, but during the day, it will happen. And part of what we look at is attendance.
Well, hopefully those kids will want to do this after school.
And if they have a barrier like transportation, then we will, we will serve them during the day. But it's not a one-size-fits-all, you know, that doesn't work for every single school and for, you know, recognizing the needs of our different communities. And so that's why we really wanted principal input of what would be manageable, and we feel like we have a good balance in this plan.
Any other questions for Dr. Hale? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Stanley?
Yeah, I've got just a few things for you tonight. First, as you know, we've got our BSBA conference later this week. So look forward to seeing everybody in Williamsburg, and I believe that opening session starts Wednesday at 2:00. So, so safe travels down, and again, I look forward to seeing you there. Last weekend, we had our open house and ribbon cutting for Rustburg Middle School, and that was a great day. We had beautiful weather. We had beautiful weather, we had a good turnout, and it was really nice watching community members walk through that building and go, wow, this is impressive. So that was exciting, and thank you for everybody who came and supported that. Ken B. Kraft was there, he spoke, and he did a very nice job. And just so you know, he plans to be here next month to give us an update on Brookville Project, because, you know, we're, we're on track to, to break ground in January, so you need to be caught up to speed on exactly what we're doing. And then I have one date for you, and I'll, I'll email you this later, but we're planning on having a full joint board meeting with the Board of Supervisors on January the ninth.
Why are you writing that down?
That'll be January the ninth at seven o'clock at the Haber Building, and, and between now and then, we'll start having budget conversations, but you know, in the past, that's been a very productive meeting, I think not only for our board and their board, but for our county as a whole.
There where we normally have the room downstairs?
Where we normally have it, that's right, the room downstairs.
Okay, Matt or some board? Mr. Brandt?
Couple things. They got a musical starting at Brookville High School December the seventh called Bring It On. And then one of sports started last week for all the schools, and we saw them, best of luck. That's all I have.
Mr. Maddox?
I'd like to thank Amy and Nick for an excellent truck or treat again. Would say five hundred and eighty? Five ninety-five. I mean, that was great weather, that's a great day. I'd like to thank everybody with Rustburg Middle School, ribbon cutting ceremony, that school is awesome. Love to see one in Alta Vista.
In town, in town. Get your robe on up.
We're working on it. But anyway, our cross-country team, boys place third in the state, and the girls place ninth. Our volleyball team won the region, and they're playing tomorrow night. And our football team is still playing. I'm gonna leave it at that. And.
Look forward to seeing y'all in Williamsburg.
Who are they playing this week?
The boards are playing Brunswick, and the girls are playing Rappahanna.
Away.
Away, oh yeah.
All right. Dr. Mill?
Yeah. Talked to Mr. Bennett this morning, and he's very enthusiastic, things are going good, new teachers are doing great. Absenteeism is better, but it's still just not anywhere near where it needs to be. So I'm really, we've really gotta get better at this. So I'm hopeful that this new plan can have some, and I don't know if incentives is the whole picture here. And so, anyway, but yeah, things are going good there. William Campbell had five students at the cross-country meet, and Laura Lee Stickerd was in the top fifteen, and I think the top fifteen are considered winners. So congratulations to her. Their football team got through the first round of regionals, so they're still playing. And their next game's Thursday. Last year's yearbook won a trophy class award, and I'm not really sure what that is, but I think it's a big deal. So we're, we're really happy for them for that, so. And then they had a college application week where they had eighty applications, and I believe that this means that they can apply to colleges for free. So they had really good participation. And, and then they had a good participation with a FASA workshop, so I know how hard that can be. And they had their beta and their junior beta inductions, and I didn't, I don't know how many, but that was good. And then the other thing I'd just like to mention, I'd like to personally and on behalf of the board, thank the Rustburg Lions Club, who every year does all the vision screening at the schools. And so, you know, they're, they're devoted community members, and, and so thank you to the Rustburg Lions Club. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
Well, I got a little bit first. I had a, hope all of you, Rustburg had an exciting afternoon with the intersection at 501 and 24 block with a logging truck turnover, so that was a good one for Rustburg's had for a while. Tonight, I went to Rustburg last week and ran into Ms. Watts, the former principal of Yellow Branch Elementary School, just the one, most wonderful lady. Had a long talk with her. She's still in great health, no problems, and just, just, just a brightness about her that never goes away. It's just not many people that have that charisma and characteristic, just enjoy talking to her. At Concord Friday, they had breakfast to honor the veterans, had quite a few veterans there. Also are gonna make a donation to the healthy veterans at the Valor Farms of twenty-five hundred dollars from coins.
Wow.
Nice.
They had their first House of Fame Assembly Friday, where they recognized all their kids for the hard work for the first nine weeks, and it was very entertaining to see the kindergartners that had never done this before, to understand they need to go stand in line and get a pen. That was very entertaining, but it was really, really, really nice. And on the Friday before Halloween, they had a truck or treat, which we participated in, and I don't know how she knows this, but she said they had eleven hundred and seven people attend, and I'll, I'll agree that was that many, but it was a huge turnout. Saturday, Mr. Hardy and I went to a ceremony at Rustburg High School, and it was to open and recognize a dedication of a wing of Rustburg High School to Campbell County High School, which was the only black high school in Campbell County from, from nineteen fifty-two to nineteen sixty-nine. And there were a lot of people there, it was a very nice ceremony. They're very proud of that, you know, their school, and they're very proud of that wing of the Rustburg High School, which is to the left of the library, which actually was a part of the Campbell County High School. So they've got a lot of memorabilia there, football helmet, basketball uniform, trophies, they've got pictures of their annuals on the wall, and it's just, it was just very nice talking to people that either they went to school there or their parents went there. And one thing we don't even think about now, it was the only black high school in Campbell County, and their sports teams, when they got done practicing their sport, they walked home. And that's just not in the Rustburg attendance area, that's in the whole county. So they said they were lucky if they were able to catch a ride, but a lot of times they just had to walk home. And, but it was, it's very, very nice and very complimentary of Dr. Stanley and Dr. Shields for, you know, making it happen. So it, it was very, very nice. Rustburg football team still playing. The Rustburg volleyball team got to the, the state quarterfinals in Hidden Valley, didn't do too good, but, but those girls on that volleyball team were as impressive a bunch of girls as you ever want to meet in your life. Just, just enjoyed sitting and watching them, and it was really, really nice. Gotta throw another kudo to Dr. Shields. Not only is he doing all the Rustburg trips, his daughter's quite the athlete on the Appomattox volleyball team, so, you know, he's running back and forth, so kudos to him. And I think that's all I got. That's enough.
Mr. Phillips?
All right, so to add to the volleyball, Mr. Shields gave me some stats here. So the, the girls have been to the state tournament six years in a row and won two state titles, so I agree with Mr. Jones, outstanding group of ladies and a great program there. We do have a FASFA night coming up this Thursday at five thirty at Rustburg High School, and the seniors have a community service day coming up on Monday, November twentieth. And we too have the Holiday Concert Series firing up. Winter Chorus Concert is on December the twelfth at seven, and Band is on the fourteenth at seven o'clock. And Dr. Hale, thanks for your presentation tonight. That was very informative and good to know that work is going on. And as Barry said, we're still playing football, but we've got our work cut out for us this weekend, LCA, so we'll see how that goes, but that's all I have.
Never know.
Yep.
Ms. Parker?
Uh, yes, so I'll, I'll probably be the most brief, which will be a shocker for everybody. But yeah, the middle school grand opening was great. The students who were doing the ambassadorship or showing us around, whatever, were fabulous. The kids were great, and they were super excited. And so we asked them some more specific questions, and some of the teachers too. So, and I appreciate everybody here too. What a lot of folks don't see when you're not there is, you know, all the board members were asking teachers and students if they had any suggestions or questions or issues or things they'd like to see improved, and there was a lot of great dialogue, so I really appreciated that. So thank you for everybody, to everybody. Truck or treat was awesome, as always. Amy did amazing job at Brookville for special needs. What I loved is it seems like more and more of the whole community, the special needs community is just drawn to that event, and it's, it's just awesome. I will also want to thank CCPS as a whole for really embracing the Veterans Day celebrations. So the Friday before Veterans Day across all of our schools, there were numerous types of Veterans Day celebrations where students and teachers could bring in their family members or even neighbors or anyone they knew. So I really appreciate how involved we are with Constitution Day and with Veterans Day and all, all of the reasons why we need to be thankful that we live in America. And I do appreciate that about our county. And Terry Automotive, how awesome, great question, Scott, to, to learn more about that, and John for sharing with us, how awesome is that for our kids in the automotive department? Because I know they already really enjoy what they learn there, but to learn more about the chips and all of the fun stuff in modern technology, how great is that? So, oh, and I did finally get to Alta Vista Combine. I've been trying to get to all the schools. I went down there, Ms. Anderson showed me around, actually ran into Superintendent Stanley, so I just want to let everybody, everybody know too. I'm always impressed when I do go to a school or go to an event. I see someone, what I call behind the tablecloth there, almost every single time. You know, people are very involved. It's not just show up once a month. So I appreciate everybody, and it was great to run into Dr. Stanley when I was touring Alta Vista Combine. So, and I think that's all I have this, this month. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Okay, I'm not gonna be too redundant on comments here, but I do want to thank you, Amy, for the trunk or treat. That was an awesome day, and it was really neat to see all the kids out there, and I think everyone had a smile on the face and me, me included. It was a lot of fun. Thank you. Ribbon cutting ceremony, just want to thank everybody for coming out. That was really awesome to walk through the new Rustburg Middle School and just see what's accomplished over the last few years, and I'm really looking forward to the Brookville High School project and seeing what we have in store for us there. So thanks to everybody with that. The other thing I wanted to do is mention, thank you guys for working on this budget. I mean, it's been almost a year that we've been working on it, and I know you're getting ready to start the process again here in just a couple months, and I know a lot of work goes into doing that, and we appreciate all the effort. Congratulations to all the football teams. Hope you all do well in the playoffs this week and, and can keep it going. And I think that's about it. And if no one else has any questions or comments, I think we have a need for a closed meeting. I'll entertain a motion to somebody.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we convene in a closed meeting for discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters or other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student in the school division, specifically students thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two from 2023 to 2024 school year in accordance with Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia as amended in nineteen fifty.
Got a motion by Dr. Mill and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's take a quick five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene in closed session. Thanks.